Good evening and welcome to the March 2022 meeting of the Penfield Public Library Board of Trustees. Glad to have you here this evening. We have a few members who are not with us. Denise O'Reilly is out of town with her family. Melissa Bowie is ill, and another member is calling in from on Zoom. The first item on the agenda is our approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any Brett? You want to move that they've okay Brett moves if they're approved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Jen. All in favor? Okay. And next up is the finance report.
We'll look at the monthly budget summary. It's two months out of the year. We're looking at February numbers. Right now, that's 17% of the year. So I always look at that as the guideline. Much of the revenues haven't been populated. So I'm just rolling right down to the expenses. Total expenses are 13%. So that's much favorable than budget. 50% of the budget, more than 50% of the budget is the wages and salaries. That's less than 12%. That's also better than budget. Materials is way down from budget. That's 6.7%. So I just anticipate more purchases in the future months. Everything else is pretty early and everything else looks good. If we go to the monthly balance sheet, it's early in the year. So all of this makes sense.
And I got the video going.
And we're
How's that?
Over the 140,000 threshold right now of the gift and memorial fund.
I'm going to bring you into the meeting.
Largely unchanged from last
Okay, thanks.
Last month.
I've never done this before, so this is kind of interesting.
That's pretty much it.
I zoomed, but
Is there a motion to approve the financial report?
Never been a participant of
Thank you, Megan. Is there a second? Rachel? Thank you. Oh, great. Thank you very much, Ryan.
Hi, everybody.
Hi Judy.
This is a strange upset event here, so it's fun.
And hello also to Melissa, who I think is watching at home. This is a public meeting. It is open to the public. Everyone can watch it on Penfield television, and it is available on YouTube after the meeting is over. This month, we received a communication from Patty Utaro of MCLS, who invited us to a Zoom meeting on Monday to talk about concerns regarding the collection in the library. It's from 6:30 until 8:00. I don't know if everybody, anybody else got that message, but I think it would be a good session for us to attend. I think that there are some things we should know about. And if you did not get the email from Patty and you would like to attend, please let me know and I'll be happy to forward it to you.
Monday, the 21st?
Monday, the 21st from 6:30 until 8:00.
Okay. Do we need an invitation per se?
Well, I will send you, it's a Zoom meeting and you'll just need the link. So let me send that to you, Judy. I'll send it to Rachel. Does anybody else?
Can you send it to me also?
Yes. Yeah, I would think it would be interesting for you especially. You guys, nope.
I'll try.
Well, try to look at it.
Is this particular to our branch or is this?
No, this is, this is something that affects just libraries in general.
And it's regarding the collections that we have?
Yes.
Okay.
We're ready for committee reports. Naras, do you have anything on finance?
No.
Do you have anything for personnel, Rachel?
No.
Strategic planning, Melissa is not here and I do not believe Judy, you are on that committee. Is there?
Yes, no. At this point, there isn't anything to report.
Which brings us to Megan in Bylaws, who does have something to report.
Yes, so there are
All right, Megan.
There are two proposed policies up for review. They are both policies that have been previously adopted, but have some revisions to them. They have both been presented at prior meetings. So at this point, we are good to go ahead and vote on them as long as there's no further concern with them. So the first one is the gift and memorial fund. The language of that is largely unchanged. It just adjusts the minimum balance from $150,000 down to $100,000. So were there any further concerns or questions, discussion on that policy?
I think Rhonda had something that she wanted to say.
Okay.
Number five. Roman number five, Roman number five, number six. The very last line says that purchases ought to be made directly from the fund. Our procedure is that if a donation is made towards materials, we do deposit the donation onto the book line, and then we pay from the book line. So can we strike that last sentence?
Well, this is the policy. So if you want to change
The procedure that we wrote based on the recent audit.
On Bonadilla?
Yeah.
On Bonadilla is that we do it that way.
So you're just saying
I have no problem with changing.
Our policy should match the procedure that you just created.
Based on the audit that we just had done, right? That is the procedure, I believe, that has been placed for many years. And it's only for donations that are material specific.
So if there are other things for the library than they come to?
Right, there, we could get, we might receive donations that would be paid for directly from the fund.
Yes.
But just not all donations would be paid.
But if they're library materials, they go into
Right.
Does anybody, does everybody agree with that change? I think that that's, I think that that's fine. So would you like to write that on the form for us and give it to me? And then I will add that here, take off the draft, and then email Deanna a final copy with the date on it.
Okay.
Do we want to vote to approve it?
Well, I think we should vote to approve it, including that language. Do we have a motion? Thank you Brett. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Jen. All in favor? Okay.
All right.
Moving right along.
So with the addition of those changes, that will be approved. And then the second policy was the policy for use of meeting rooms. This had been introduced two meetings ago. There was some discussion at the last meeting. And I know Rhonda made some adjustments based on some recommendations that the staff had, so that has been revised again. It's, you know, basically priority is given to the library, then the town of Penn, or the Friends, then the town of Penfield, and then Penfield residents. It's not available for use for parties. You know, no smoking, they're responsible for setup breakdown. If there is any damage, it will be billed to whomever is on the application. Very standard with, you know, meeting rooms for public use. So is there any further concern or discussion that anyone wanted to add for that policy?
I don't think so. Is there a motion to approve? Naras, thank you. You'll second, Megan will second. Thank you very much. And all in favor? Okay.
And that is our two new policy revisions for the month.
Great. And under communications and advocacy, Jennifer, do you have a report from your committee?
I do. Denise couldn't be here to, oh, sorry. Denise couldn't be here tonight. So she asked me just to thank everyone for our participation this year in Advocacy Day, which took place on March 2nd. It was another successful year in which we joined together to advocate for funding and policies that benefit and strengthen our libraries. From the board, we had three members that contacted elected officials. We had one tweet and one Facebook post. She was wondering if anyone had anything more that they'd like to add to these stats, if they did anything that she just didn't know about. I did read in the director's report, Rhonda.
Yeah, well, I attended Advocacy Day meetings through MCLS. We had virtual meetings with Jen Lenzford and then an assistant of Senator Box. So both were very well attended, and I think both were very helpful to everybody. Yeah.
Good. Great.
Okay. We are ready for the director's report.
Thank you.
I don't, I hope you all had a chance to read it. And would you like to talk about this, since this is your first report?
Sure, I would like to actually, thank you. Yeah, so I've been here now five weeks, very busy five weeks. I've learned a lot and we started on several projects. One of the first things I noticed while I was in the building is how certain portions of it had really just, they needed a little love. So we reached out to the facility people and they've been amazing. If you walk all the way to the back of the library, you'll see a brand new green wall they painted over the chalkboard wall, which had been there a little too long, I think. And so that rear wall is green and then they, because we loved the color so much, they accented it in several other places. And then they just kept painting. So now, starting in the back, and if you go towards the left, it's all the way past the staff door and the Friends door, and all the way behind all of the computers. And they've started touching up some of the pillars along in the nonfiction and fiction section. And they're going to finish up by the Ruth Bremen room, and they're going to pull down the wallpaper and paint the same green to balance out the back wall. It looks amazing and it's just, it's just paint. And it's just, it really, I think the staff is really happy. And I don't know if patrons notice it, but people, people seem to be looking around. It's been very busy and it's, everything just feels really good inside. And then we just kind of looked at some of the furniture and some of the chairs, especially in the beginning of the building, were rather worn because they're so well used. So we just switched them out with some chairs that weren't as well used, so it didn't cost us anything. And it looks like we have, you know, nice new furniture. So that, that was also just fun to do. And we're just looking around and looking, you know, for how we can just make the experience a little, a little nicer right now. We had some trouble with our cleaners, but we've been working with them. Deanna and I, Deanna's been great. And we've been working almost daily with the facilities people to make sure the cleaners are getting better and they're learning how to do it. And we're seeing improvement. We started meetings with, we have a librarian meeting now. We've already had two once a month and they're very, librarians are very excited about all the new projects that we're doing. And it's, it's exciting for me because there are so many ideas coming up and we're just moving forward really quickly. We had our first monthly meeting with the circulation staff. And during the interviews, in one of the interviews I had when I was, you know, coming on board, somebody had mentioned that the public really wanted to return their materials inside the building. And since the pandemic, they could not do that. So we just talked it out and we figured out a way to do that. And now it's been going for two weeks, no issues, no problems. People are coming right in. It was like nothing had changed, nobody even noticed. Just people started bringing in the books and so, very good. I guess I've been very busy and I'm ready to start some more projects. I will reach out to the Strategic Plan Committee to get that started this month. I'd like to get that started so we can figure out how we're going to move forward with the building. And that's, that's, those are the big ticket items. Thank you.
Busy, reading all these things, you are very busy.
Well, it must be exciting for the staff to have you and have you be so receptive to their ideas too.
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, we have, I mean, in my five weeks, I can tell you that we have a very, very dedicated staff who are very intelligent, who, today they spent about two hours in a webinar. Everybody's very excited about new ideas and they really want to bring them to Penfield. And so it's, it's nice that we collaborate and share these ideas. And I think you'll see the results very soon.
I noticed in the report that some of the librarians do a wonderful job explaining what's really going on in their areas. I think Natalie and Julie and children's. And I think it was Stephanie.
I just wanted to point out, I really like how they even break it down into showing their collaborations. I really like to see that we're not just a standalone entity, that we're involving more of the community. So I really liked that aspect.
I like it too.
Where they had the rec center and really highlighted that.
Yes. Yeah, like I said, we have some amazing staff members. I mean, when I look at the number of programs that they are pulling off every month, I'm stunned. I really am. It's amazing.
But it was helpful to learn more about just the programs themselves other than just the title. Because I don't, you have a feel for, oh my goodness. When they talked about making a votive candle and dipping the candle, those are two things. So I could see the children being really excited about going home with two things instead of just one. Are there any other comments or observations about the director's report?
I enjoyed and felt that that was a piece that we had never had the opportunity to share in before. It was the detail of what is going on at the library rather than just a highlight of a particular topic. But the detail, and I think Rachel said the same thing, but I, I found that most rewarding that you actually got to see what the workings of the library were involved in.
Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Under new business, we have a couple of big topics. One is the draft of, I hope you all read this. I did, I took notes. They're not, they're mostly just a couple of questions, it looks like or something. But it is the draft of the library's report to the New York State. Well, it's the annual report for the, for our library to New York State. And it has more facts and figures than I think anybody really wants to know. I had some questions.
Sure.
But I don't know if anybody else did. I was, most of mine involved, and I know that COVID had a lot to do with it. But in 2020, the library was open for three months and then it closed. And in 2021, it was closed until around Labor Day and then it opened.
Limited hours until Labor Day?
Limited hours. But in a couple of places.
Actually, that was changed since I sent you that. It was actually through June. We changed it in June, which I had the wrong information. I have edited it. So we had limited hours through June and then
That's what I thought. I was looking at it and I thought, well, maybe I might
It was June.
You know, I've been wrong before once or twice. So I thought, well, it could be me.
You know, it's so interesting because when I was writing the report, of course, I wasn't here in Penfield, and so I relied on the staff. And everything is so fuzzy. I would speak to one staff member and they would just sit there thinking, you know, well, I don't know. And they'd go back to their calendars. And I got a lot of different responses because I think the time was just, you know, we, it was such a confusing time and things were changing all, things were changing. Nobody really wrote things down.
Well, things were changing and they were always the same at the same time. And I think it was like that for everyone. So I
So it was through June though? But then, yes, then we went to regular hours during the summer.
What surprised me was, given all that, given that the library was open a little more in 2021 than it was in 2020, the numbers of books and print materials was lower. Does that make sense? Or the circulation?
The circulation was lower?
Maybe I looked at the
That's cataloged.
The catalog books, that was, that's in the collection.
Right, that's the quantity of our collection.
Right.
Yeah, and I wasn't here and it's really hard for me to explain why that happened. I don't, I don't know.
That was my question. Why did the number, we don't know. Okay.
I don't know. But I do know, I mean, based on my work in West Nyack, the vendors were unable to deliver books for a very long time. We had waiting, they had waiting lists on almost all of our books and things just weren't being published and shipped in a timely manner. We were waiting all the time for our items. So that might have been what happened here as well.
I'm sure it was, because I think everybody's been waiting for things.
I mean, it's still a little slower than it had been before, pre-pandemic.
When it got over to services, there was a question, is the library registered for services for either the New York State Talking Book and Braille Talking Library or the Andro High School Braille and Talking Book Library? And it's no. Should we be? Is that a goal?
It absolutely is, is a goal. It's not, it's not a hard goal to reach. We simply have to apply and we can do that. We do offer materials through Monroe County. That's not the question though.
No, the question is our library specifically.
Yeah, and I'm, what I'm guessing is that a lot of libraries in Monroe County don't belong to the state library because we have our own. But we, we can, you know, I've done that before. We can easily apply for that.
Well, my question was, is that something we should do?
Yeah, we can do it, absolutely.
Good to know.
And then I wondered why, when it came to the summer adult reading program, there were no adults in 2021, but there were 12 in 2020. I mean, again, I, it's just, it's not, I'm, I'm just asking the question.
I'm guessing it's not accurate actually because we, we tend to not have adults register for summer reading. They simply fill out these little, like this little thing with your name and whether or not you like the book, the raffle ticket. So there's no actual registration. So I don't know who the 12 people were in the previous year because we don't register.
First of all, it seemed like a small number, but then it was bigger than zero.
You know, I, I don't know how the previous director counted that or the librarian counted it, but if there's no registration, it tends to be zero. That doesn't mean people didn't participate. I'm sure they did.
Then this has, this is something that, this is about budgeted positions. And it said zero for library director certified, which is your position. And it said vacant library director certified and had one. But your vacancy occurred, the vacancy occurred at the beginning of 2022.
Right. Each of the section has instructions. There are so many different sections in this. For those who, you know, have never seen one of these reports, they tend to be 28, 30 pages and there are many sections within it. And with each section, we'll, we'll give instructions saying, please answer as per maybe your fiscal year 2021, or please answer as of December 31st of the previous year. This one happened to ask before I was hired, so it was between directors.
It was, but there was like one day in December of 2021 when we did not have a library director.
Right, and I think it asked for December 31st.
Wow. So it makes it look like we're, it gives what I think would be a false impression, but
Well, I'll, I can go back to it.
No, I'm just
I think it said December 31st. And it's not like it's a negative. It's simply, none of this is really, when you look at the state report, a lot of people wanted to, to speak almost as a promotion for your library. It's not really meant to be that. It's more meant to be a snapshot of your library at a particular time. And so it's all libraries in New York State. And so what I understand the state is looking for is just a general idea of this, of how libraries are doing, how public libraries are doing in New York State. I don't think they're going to ever zero in on one library and say, you're without a director that day, you know, why didn't you work more quickly? I don't think that's the next goal. So I do, you know, we do have to sign off on it. And so I do answer as honestly as I possibly can. And for me, especially this year, it's very difficult because I wasn't here. And a lot of it is a little bit of guesswork based on what people are giving, information people are giving me. And that's all I can do really with this.
And I can see where this section doesn't have the dates in there, but I can see where a lot of the other sections, it clearly says as of December 31st, 2021.
Yeah, I can go back and look. And if it doesn't say that exactly, I can change that before I submit it tomorrow.
It's just, it was just, um, does anybody else, did anybody else have any questions?
My comment is that next year's report won't be like this year's report.
Well, it is nice when you see growth.
Right. And we will be off to a good start in 2022, 23, so.
Thank you.
I think you have, you did the best that you can with the information that you have. And so I think it will be a different looking report next year. So I think you did well with whatever, with the work you had to do with the materials and the information that you were able to garner, so.
Oh, actually, one thing I did notice, and Rhonda, this is probably just as easy as emailing it to you, but I moved since I first took my oath of office. So it had, I'm still in the town of Penfield, still, still good. But I do have a new address, so I'll just send that to you.
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
And I have a different email and phone number.
Oh, okay.
So I will send those to you also.
Thank you. That is why, you know, it is important that every trustee read as much as, as he or she possibly can, these little things. I won't know.
Yeah, when I was updating on my address and everything, didn't think about that.
Well, a lot of times you fill out your paperwork when your term begins and then nobody ever goes back to check it again. But I will get that to you. What do you need from us? Do you need
We need a vote to approve these.
Okay. Naras?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all in favor? I don't, if it's unanimous. Thank you, and thank you for all your work on this. In some ways, it was kind of interest, an interesting way to become acquainted with the library.
It was a wonderful way to learn as much as possible, really, really quickly.
And then you had some lease renewals.
Yes, so there are two leases with Tri Delta Resources. They, they lease and support our computers. So the first lease, the first lease is for seven PCs, eight monitors, and two laptops. And the seven computers are for staff. The eight monitors are for staff. And the two laptops are for patrons to use. Our laptops are pretty old and we thought we'd get two new ones to help them. Sometimes a patron doesn't want to sit with the public computer area. They need to do something private. They can take it into a quiet study room or just a quiet space where nobody is around and, and work. So it was time to get some new ones, especially for those people who want to do maybe a job interview on Zoom. You need a better laptop for that. The second lease is nine computers for the, the, the patrons to use. And we actually leased 18 last time this lease came up. And with the pandemic, we took nine away so that there would be spacing between them. And we just don't need the 18 still yet. I'm not saying we might not want I'm not saying we might not want to add another lease in a year or two. It's possible. Our numbers will come back up. Right now, they're still down, and nine is enough. The prices of everything obviously has gone up. And even with the reduction of the nine PCs, because we added the two laptops, the price is almost the same as it had been three years ago. So we're not asking for any sort of increase, but we are getting less equipment, and that's because of the price, the ongoing price, prices that are with PCs. They're just, everything's gone way up. So this would be a three-year lease if you, if you think it's a good idea. And we need to know as soon as possible because the lease is up this month. Any questions or thoughts about it?
Is this covered under the blanket contract with the town?
Yes. What do you mean the blanket contract with the town? This is in our operating expenses in our budget.
It's in, I'm, the town makes, has an agreement, like with the copiers? The town has an agreement that everybody would get a copier from the, the same supplier and get a preferred rate. And so even though the library pays for its own.
It's on state contract? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yes, this is on state contract.
Thank you.
This is, this is basically a renewal of a lease with some slight changes. Not slight, actually, some major changes.
Does anyone have any other questions? Is there a motion to approve both contracts? Megan, second? Brett? Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor? Now, we want to talk about board committee assignments. I have, I talked to Melissa, and she is happy to stay on as chair of strategic planning. Megan would like to not be chair of policy and bylaws. And I believe everybody else that I heard from was happy with their assignments. If they were miserable, they didn't call and tell me or send me an email. So my guess is that we, we probably try to operate the bylaws committee without a chair because Megan has agreed to be, stay on the committee, just not to manage the whole process. And I'll check and see how many policies will be up for renewal by the end of the year, and maybe as a group, we can do those. Is everybody fine with that? Okay. And then the strategic long-range plan?
Yes, I, I was hoping that during the month of March, maybe early April, I would reach out to the members of the strategic planning committee. We could start the ball rolling if everybody is ready. I put the, the formal documents together. I'll send them to the members, and we can have an initial meeting next week or the week after if you're, if everybody is ready. So that's Melissa, Megan, and Judy. Judy, that's you. Thanks.[977.20][977.20](Laughter). Okay, so I'll reach out to you and we'll print something?
Sure.
Because it would be really nice if we could do something, some kind of public forum, maybe a survey, just see as, as, as much community inclusion as we can find.
Which brings us to continuing business, and we have our bylaws. I sent those out to everyone. I hope you had a chance to read them. I think probably there are, there are two significant changes or, or not. One is a non-change. And that is, when we developed our policy over the term length, we were, we were changing the policy and then we wanted to change the bylaws. We did not realize that in our charter, it dictates our term length as five years. We can't change our charter with the state of New York. So we are, we are there. And so I highlighted that. The one thing that we did have in our policy that we had not, that was not in the bylaws, was the term limits. And when we first proposed this and we were going to three-year terms, we said that you could have an initial term and then two consecutive terms, and then you would have to result, be off the board for a year or two before you could come back on. Well, if we have a five-year term and then you can be reappointed for a second five-year term, that's 10 years. I kept this at the two terms, making it 15. I tend to think that that might be a little long. I don't know how anybody else feels about that. We had had some members on our board who were on the board for more than 20 years. That's, that's a long time. And I don't think, I think that we want to involve more of the community and not have a board that's self-sustaining. Does that make sense? So I'm.
Yes.
I'm questioning whether or not we want to change that length of the term limits to one term. And I, I would be interested in what everybody has to say about that.
You mean one-term renewal?
A one-term renewal. So you're on one term and then you can renew for a term. That's 10 years.
Well, speaking from my own experience, this only being my first full year, I'm still learning many things about the ins and outs of the library as related to our community, as related to New York State, and as related to Monroe County. So I, I think that probably, you know, maybe when I've reached three or four years, I might have some of this under my belt. So I think it makes sense if you can renew for a second term, that you become more proficient at what you are doing. But, so I think two five-year terms is probably plenty. But the opportunity to learn more as you go is, I think, the basis of being on this, so, on this board of trustees. Those are only my personal opinions, but I don't know.
What do you think, Niraj?
I think 10 years is more than enough, like total.
How about you, Brett?
I think 10 years is more than enough in total.
I would tend to agree as well.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I'm also fine with 15 years. I don't think too many people will do that, so, but I'm fine with 10.
Well, then I will change that to one, a first term with one-term renewal.
Okay.
And if somebody comes along who is just wonderful and wants to be on the board for a third term, and maybe an exception can be made and that can change the policy, but.
But what?
You probably wouldn't allow it, because if the bylaws say two terms, then it kind of is two terms. You wouldn't want to change the bylaws for an individual, because the bylaws should be a general statement for the organization. But that amazing trustee could take a year off and then come back.
And come back.
Oh, yeah. All right, yeah.
They could work on the foundation, they could work on the friends.
Friends.
They could revolve.
They could go sit on a beach.[1322.83][1322.83](Laughter).
They could get interviewed to be a library page. Same thing.
Were there any other things that people noted that they wanted to change or revise in the bylaws?
You had said something about Article 5, letter B, that the officers shall serve a term of one year.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to do anything with that?
We had changed the officer terms to two years. And this year, in December, when we had our meeting, we actually voted to continue the officer. So we did have an election. And, but I don't, do we want to do that? How do you, there was some strong feeling that, not when I, before I became president, that being president of the library board and also be in some of the other offices, that there is so much to learn that it takes you, like Judy was saying, just to be a trustee. It takes a while. But to be like a president or a vice president or a finance officer, there's a steep learning curve. And so you spend the first six to nine months learning on the job, and then it's nice to be able to apply that in the next year. Does, does everyone, but then you get one term. That's it. I can't imagine anybody wanting more than one.[1434.51][1434.51](Laughter). Although you could sit out again, just like the, a member and then come back, I suppose. Do we want to change that to two years?
That's fine.
I, I think the two years makes a lot of sense for all those reasons that you just spoke about. The learning curve is steep, and if you want to be involved in the job, then what you know and can apply can certainly help maybe the, the vice president who's coming up behind you as, I don't know, that just makes sense to me. But I don't think one year is, is enough, unless you have a really terrible president and then you want to get rid of him.[1494.83][1494.83](Laughter). I don't know. How's everybody else feel about that?
I think the two years has.
I think the two years has been helpful. I don't think that one year is really enough. And it, and it leads to continuity. And also for the.
Yes.
For the director, I think it's hard to have a different personality to deal with every year. I mean, not that there's anything wrong with any of us, but it's just, you know.[1527.01][1527.01](Laughter). So we will make that adjustment. With those additions and changes, that revision and the addition of Section G in the, in the board term limits, can we approve the bylaws? Brett? Thank you. And Rachel? All in favor? Thank you. And Deanna? I will make those changes and then forward this to you without the draft on it. And the personnel policies, that's something really for Rhonda to review and to make suggestions to us if she sees.
Yeah, I mean, I, I did look through it thoroughly. I don't see any changes that need to be made immediately. And if, if it's okay with the board, I would like to be in this position a little longer before I suggest any changes, and maybe we'll bring it up again in three to six months if that's.
I think that is perfectly fine. I just, I didn't want it to not be looked at.
Thank you.
So we're there. Before we get to the claims payment, I want to call in Linda because I missed you before.
You're remembered.[1614.11][1614.11](Laughter).
And you, you thought you were going to get a free lunch and not have to speak. But can you bring us up to date on what's going on with the town?
Yeah, well, we have a meeting tomorrow night. And I don't know what you might think is interesting. We, we're approving a new dance studio on Empire Boulevard, which is.
Oh, cool.
Another new business that's exciting. And we're having the public hearing on something they already kind of said is happening on the news, but we, we're having a public hearing on Bar Bill. Bar Bill is a restaurant that's out in Buffalo, so popular with the Buffalo Bills and so on. And they bought the McGregor's Colonial on Empire Boulevard. And we're having a public hearing tomorrow night to hear more about how they're going to preserve it as well as, you know, picks it up and get it going for.
Cool.
This year. So that's exciting, too. Otherwise, you know, things are, are moving along well. There's nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. Everything's going well, unless you guys have any questions. I'm here for that.
No questions? Okay, thank you. Brett? You were the auditor.
I did the audit for the invoices for last month. I would like to have a motion passed to approve the total of $18,758.38.
Thank you, Megan. Is there a second? Niraj? Okay. All in favor? It's fast. And Judy? Will you be back next month?
I will, in person.
In person? Okay.
So, so just be ready.[1726.83][1726.83](Laughter).
So you will be auditor next month?
Oh, thank you.[1732.46][1732.46](Laughter).
Hey, don't mention it.
I love that, that opportunity. So thank you very much.[1740.21][1740.21](Laughter).
Okay. We have a finance and a personnel issue to discuss, and we will go into executive session to do that. So right now, is there a motion to adjourn the public portion of this meeting? Wow.[1758.83][1758.83](Laughter). Okay, Jen and Megan, seconds.
I'll write you here. I'm all just really excited.